Good evening. I'd like to call the study session for North Augusta City Council for Monday, October the ninth, two thousand twenty-three to order. This time I'd like to turn this over to our city administrator, Mr. Jim Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have, as part of our normal session, we have a city council meeting review, agenda item, and it's a lengthy agenda, so we'll go through all that. Second item we'll have is department details, and third will be under mayor's matters or focus items, and really we'll have two items from the staff, one regarding impact fees, which also has an item on the agenda, and then a city property sale, which also has something on the agenda. So for those two items, I'll mention it during the agenda, but we're going to delve into that a little more deeply as we go during the focus items. So, subject to any questions, we'll go ahead and start off through our agenda review. So, our old business, we have under planning and development ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash sixteen to amend the zoning map in the city of North Augusta by rezoning plus or minus nine point eight four acres of land owned by CSR Development Company, and this is the one that is on East Pointe Vista Road. This is directly behind the property that was going to be the public safety headquarters, and this is to allow for a townhome neighborhood. And so ultimately, this is something that the city council's already voted on once. I think you've been provided a full update on that, and I'll pause for any questions if you had any on that one.
This is really not that, but the lady, just matter of fact, as I was coming in this door, called me right across the street where, I don't know if you know where Ed's barber shop, she said some guys were out there cutting the grass, and that where Ed's, there's a, you know, I don't know if it was his property which he sold, I think, but she said, why ain't the city cutting that grass? I said, well, I don't believe that's city property, but it's not, but she said, well, one time they have, and one time it happens, so I'd bring it up to you.
To my recollection, Councilman, we had a discussion about this, about a city easement that was running along the back fence there, and that had been cut at one point in time, but most of the work that's being done on that side of the street is done by the private developer associated with the bluegrass place and the milling tract. So, what we don't want to do is get in there with city crews and interfere with what's going on on the private development side of the house.
Right, well, that's what I told her, but I told her I would ask, so thank you. I'll call her back.
Thanks, Councilman. The next item we have was item six, under planning and development ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen, changing the corporate limits of the city of North Augusta. This is an annexation ordinance, and as we talked about, this is a little over twenty-seven acres, and that's on the backside of rushing waters that would have a connection through that neighborhood. Staff didn't have any major objections to that based on that connection, so Fire Station Two could service it as required. So again, I'll pause for any questions on that one. Item seven was the ordinance to amend the code of laws for the city of North Augusta, specifically qualifications for city administrator, second reading, and again, I will not comment on that as that directly impacts the seat. So, any discussion you wish to have, you can have that there. And that's all the old business we have under the agenda, and we have a lot of new items, so I'm going to go through this. What I'd like to do first is essentially bundle, if you look at items number eight through thirteen, listed all as finance, those are all ordinances, so this will be the first reading of all those ordinances, and these are all associated with the budget. So, ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash nineteen is adopting the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, which starts on January first of two thousand twenty-four, and that's what you have here in your binders and your workbooks here, and that's the budget for that. And then you have to do a separate ordinance, levying the annual tax on our citizens that's associated with this budget. You also have to do a separate ordinance for establishing the stormwater management service charges, so any changes to the rates that we do, you have to pass that as an ordinance, so you're going to see that in ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-one, which is the stormwater management side of the house, and then coming down the line to ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two, the wastewater service charges is a separate ordinance, and then going down one more after that, ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-three is establishing the water service charges. So, these are all things that we covered in the study session update and talked about their charge rates for each of those, but those ordinances will cover those changes going forward. And the last item on there, under finances, ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four, amending the business license ordinance to update this class schedule as required by the Act of one seventy-six of two thousand twenty. So, this is a state of South Carolina requirement where, you know, the state will publish certain rates, and we have to abide by those rates, and that has to be adopted by ordinance as well. So, all of those, eight through thirteen, ordinance numbers two thousand twenty-three dash nineteen, all the way through two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four are associated with the budget, and they'll have a first reading of all those going next week. What I'd also like to say, we had received a couple of questions from the council regarding impacts to our staff regarding the healthcare costs, and then assigning that with the COLA, and also with our, a number of our positions are moving on grade, or also just through the course of time, being promoted. And as we've gone through that, not seen any negative impacts to our employee work. So, basically, nobody's going to be worse off than they were last year, and I've got some numbers that Linda has done up that shows that there's, you know, the good of the COLA and potential promotions outweighs the minor costs associated with the employee-provided healthcare, twenty-five percent that would be added. I would also tell you, it's my intention to move forward, that we would lock the current employees at fifty percent of their healthcare rate going forward. Like, we would not go back and do another twenty-five percent the following year, and twenty-five percent the following year. We'd lock those at fifty percent, and looking at new employees paying fully into the employee portion, so they know that coming in the gate as they would get into the service. So, we can do this any number of different ways. I'm prepared to take any questions. Linda and the rest of the staff are here as well, so if you have specific questions about the budget. Councilman Carpenter, Rick is out today. There's a family thing he's got to deal with, so I can't necessarily give you a definitive answer today about, you'd asked about some folks that were volunteering at the activity center about what their pay rate could be, and there's some other issues that come along with that that I could talk to you offline, but essentially, not every person would be eligible funding, or there'd be concerns about, at a certain salary band, they become less eligible for other benefits. So, we want to make sure we're not putting any of those folks at a disadvantage going forward. So, we're going to have to do a little more homework on that as far as the activity center and some of the folks that are volunteering down there, but we have that as an action item, and that's something we'll continue to work on.
Well, I mean, these are, I mean, like, I'm a volunteer down there, but these are little workers.
I'm tracking, Councilman.
I mean, you know, you got to be here at eight, and you got to leave at four or two, you know, I mean, that's, like I said, we try to make these young people be a little self-sufficient, and I just think we need to reward them a little, with a little money.
We'll have the opportunity, like we normally do with council discussion prior to officially voting, but if you have specific things that Jim and Linda need to know, you need to have answered in advance, preferably as always, get in touch with them this week, but we'll still have, as always, conversation next week.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'll go ahead and move past item thirteen, and we'll move into the next item under administration, which is ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-five, authorizing the sale of excess city property at seventeen-eleven Plank Road, parcel zero-zero-six fifteen dash zero-six dash zero-seventeen. And again, I have it listed as a focus item, so if you'll allow me, we'll go ahead and cover that more in depth in focus items and not cover it here during the agenda. Then the next item beyond that would be under planning and development, which is a resolution, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-nine, directing the city of North Augusta Planning Commission to conduct studies and to recommend an impact fee ordinance pursuant to South Carolina Code six dash one dash nine fifty. And this is a byproduct of the discussions that council had at offsite in Greenwood, talking about potential impact fees, and one of the things you have to have before you can levy an impact fee, you have to have a capital improvement plan, and even before you get to that point, you have to have the planning commission make some recommendations. So, again, under focus items, you know, one of the things we've teed up for tonight is for the council to be able to give guidance to Tommy Paradise regarding, you know, what kinds of aspects are to be considered or at least sent to the planning commission from a guidance perspective. So, again, we'll talk that more during the focus item. And then under item sixteen, administrations, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash forty, authorizing expenditure of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, expenditure request number eight. And number sixteen and seventeen are linked, and so this resolution for the expenditure number eight is for the financial services software that the finance department has evaluated. So, we went out and did a request for qualifications, not a request for proposals. I would tell you that between Linda and Ricky, Tom Zizer, and a number of other senior staff, Rachel Moody, have met with a number of software vendors prior to going out to bid through the RFQ process, and then once the RFQ process was advertised, ceased all communications with those vendors, and then opened up the bids, or the qualifications, and evaluated those, and came out with the vendor that we would like to move forward with. And as you all are familiar with, at the end of the calendar slash fiscal year, we end up taking everything offline for two weeks so we can reconcile our books. It's an imposition on the staff, but more importantly, it's an imposition on our citizens to not be able to go to the finance office and get things squared away during that period of time. And this will allow us to get out of that model, among other things, and be able to more properly automate those procedures. Linda can certainly talk more in-depth than I can about the benefits of this particular system, but what we're asking for is for the expenditure out of ARPA for this particular system. And we've talked about this in previous sessions, as we've laid out kind of our long-term ARPA plan, and so this is something the council has supported previously, and we wanted to at least get this to you for consideration. And then the next item is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash forty-one, which is the authorization for us to enter into the contract with the winning bidder, if you will, for the RFQ for the finance. So, these two things are linked. So, one is the council is apportioning money out of ARPA for the specific use of this financial services software, and then the second resolution is for the actual entering the contract with that service.
Jim, just want to make sure, on the resolution where it says the bottom wears the expenditure or two point five remains available, that number is there because that is showing what we changed over when we got the grant money? That's been put in there?
That's correct.
If you add up all these numbers, it comes eleven point four million.
Correct.
Okay.
So, it's two point four is, two point five is what we have at our disposal because we were able to refund ourselves about two million dollars after we got the RIA grant for the wastewater project.
Jim, I don't know, this might be a Linda question, but this software, I know we've been talking about this for four or five years, updating it, is this, will this tie every department together through this software, or is this just specifically for finance? Because I know that was some questions people ask me, hey, can we get permits online, you know, maybe submit stuff to Tommy or whatever?
I'm not going to overpromise. You know, there's no software system, and we've looked at a lot of different software systems, so there's no software system that makes everything organically talk to each other, but the primary focus that we had when we were evaluating the qualifications was for the finance department, although we had an eye towards permits and things going through Tom Zizer's department for building standards. And Linda can certainly talk that or Rachel about the aspects of that software, but we believe this meets the minimum requirements that we have, and also additional requirements we have, but if Rachel and I would like to pile in, I'll be happy to take your comments.
It'll include permitting, has some HR functions as well, so we can put our time sheets on there. So, yes, it's more of an enterprise system, if you will, than just finance.
And also, I see it says we have to enter a contract. Is this, like, we are physically purchasing the software and installing it, or is it an ongoing thing that we kind of, because I know they always want you to get the latest in graders, so.
Well, Council, and the way that we have it now is we have a line right now for the maintenance of the existing software program that we have, and so there will be a maintenance contract requirement, which is not what this is for. This is for the initial purchase, and this will also require their personnel to come onsite, much like we did with SmartCop this year, to be able to get that system integrated, to port over all the old information, and we would anticipate even with entering into a contract now, that that would likely happen, you know, next year, so as we go into the budget cycle, that we're ready to go with that software.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, it's cloud-based, but there is the annual maintenance. It's in the internet.
It's other people's servers, is what the cloud is. Also, note GovSense, the company that we evaluated and chose as the winning bidder is a fairly local company that's out of Alpharetta, Georgia, and they're servicing Alpharetta, and they also service a number of other large municipalities, to include Henderson, Nevada, and some other cities that we talked to. So, as part of our evaluation, we really did not just listen to sales pitches, we talked to the cities that have these kinds of software-based systems to get their feedback of what was good and what was not, and GovSense was the, we had the best feedback, and they had the best mechanisms for us to move forward with.
Are there any real close local that have it?
Charleston County uses it for permitting, we know.
I'll pause for any questions, but that concludes the agenda review from the staff. All right, we'll move into department details, and so first up will be finance, Linda Williamson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just the two regular updates. Cycle one disconnect will be October eighteenth and nineteenth, and also our cycle two will have a due date of October nineteenth. That's it.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Our public services director was not able to be here this evening, but Rachel, I don't know if you wanted to cover that.
I certainly can, and it was all hands on deck for them today, driving vehicles, so we gave Jason a pass for coming tonight. Ridgecrest Avenue, the southbound lane along Ridgecrest Avenue between Summer Hill and Martin Town Road will be temporarily reduced to one lane tomorrow, Tuesday, October tenth, from the hours of eight AM to three PM. Utility crews will be working within the roadway, installing new water service, and that'll be posted on Facebook as well.
Those trees being planted at the tail end of West Avenue look fantastic.
They really do, yeah.
That's hard to put a lot of work into that.
Yeah.
And I presume the few homeowners there know about this. I mean, I don't want them opening up the front doors, whoa. Well, I'd a courtesy to people.
Yeah, we normally post that on, we post that normally through our social media.
I know we do, but I'm telling you, we need to contact people when you're impacted right there with it.
Subject to any other questions, we'll go to planning and development with Tommy Paradise.
We plan on having the planning commission meeting next Wednesday. We anticipate the development code review being on there, and also six oh five Grand Avenue, that is a townhome construction that had stopped in the middle of construction, and it's been eyesore since I got here. And our code enforcement did an involuntary cleanup there and has boarded that, those buildings up.
Good, thank you, Tommy.
And Tommy, the house, that's also the eyesore up on George Avenue, the half-house.
One that looks like it's burnt out.
Yeah, but it's cut evenly. I'll say whoever did it did a nice job, but any news on that?
No, ma'am.
Next up is Chief Thomas, Public Safety.
Good evening. October's a busy month, event-wise for us and reaching the community. Cookies with a cop is at Chick-fil-A this Friday from three to five, so if you're inclined, come by and have a cookie with us, because that's where we're going to be from three to five. And then we have fourteen letters of intent, or interest, I'm sorry, for the wrecker rotation that we talked about a couple of months ago. The deadline for us to do those inspections are October fifteenth, so we've got quite a bit of new wreckers coming on board. So, if they can meet those requirements, then we'll put them on the list. And then public safety is participating in several different job fairs. One of them's on Wednesday at Aiken Technical College, and our annual golf tournament is Monday, August, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm saying August, October the sixteenth at the River Club. That's the tournament that we hold every year for our Christmas families that we purchase items for every year. And then the trunk or treat is the last thing on October twenty-first, and that'll be held at the activity center.
Absolutely. Good stuff, Chief, thank you.
Hey, Chief, do you know if there's any teams still available, open for registering to play, or is it full already?
We'll take you, man. Come on.
Okay.
Yep.
We're going to skip past PRT this evening. We've got some leadership absences, so we're just going to go ahead and press on with engineering and public works with Tom Zizer. and Public Works with Tom Caesar.
The pedestrian bridge at Riverview Park that goes to the village at Riverview was reported to you last week. The bridge, old bridge, was removed by streets and drains, and they are this week constructing the foundations for the new bridge. So, the walking trail, there's, they're working in the walking trail around the park this week, and so, there's intermittent closures of a portion of that trail while that construction takes place. We hope to have both foundations complete by next week and ready for the new bridge. And similarly, at the Greenway at Waterworks Park, we have awarded a contract for that work, and the contractor actually mobilized equipment this, today, and they will begin that reconstruction, resurfacing tomorrow and should have that completed for use by the end of this week. While that work's taking place, access to the dog park will be, will be limited, if not restricted altogether.
Well, I met a lady somewhere this week, weekend, that a group of them were going to clean up the dog park or something because she was asking me sort of where it was and, you know, a group that's coming in the dog park. I mean, she was real excited about it.
What we're excited for.
Yeah, but now I'm going to bring up an old thing here, Tom. My little dirt, as I call it, the dirt road is behind Mossy Creek, and I'm wanting to say the name of that street is Mitchell, but it's right behind the Mossy Creek School, and we've always just called it, the people who live there, the dirt road. And those people, matter of fact, I talked to some family members, they said they do pay city taxes, those houses right in there. But I think you and me talked about this probably three years ago, that is it a state? They need, because the road is the dirt road. When it rains, I mean, there's holes this big that they drive through. It's awful. So, I don't want to give up on the dirt road.
That is a county road. It has a county road designation number, and Aiken County acknowledges that they're responsible for it, and they do grade that road periodically as part of their normal road schedule.
Kelly Mobley is our representative for Aiken County. That's who they need to reach out to. We can give you that number for the given.
I mean, if you're ever just driving around, nothing to do.
I know, Tom.
Then go back there to the dirt road. And I don't understand why they hadn't busted their tires, tore up something in their cars, but it's awful.
I told Tom earlier, if you haven't seen the sidewalk on Cypress, it's really nice. So, once we get the sign and can, people from the Greenway can go up there into the restroom that's being done, it's going to be really nice for citizens. So, thank you, your team, Tom.
Wait a minute, Tom, one more thing, I'm sorry. This has been a busy week or weekend for me. Mr. Peters, Jeff Peters, on the corner of Curtis and Nob Cone, he wrote me a text today, and if y'all give me one minute, I'll read it to you. Well, what he was saying, you know, he wants a four-way stop sign there. Remember, we talked about Nob Cone and Pesca having a three-way stop sign, you know, there. But, I mean, he says the speeding, and chief, it's unreal. I mean, he writes me a good bit about it, and I said, well, I'll bring it back up tonight. I mean, I'm like him, I agree that needs to be a four-way stop sign. We got one at Curtis, and we got one, need one at Courtney, because people do fly through there, I'm telling you, I see it. But, you know, what do I need to tell Mr. Peters?
We have previously submitted a request to the DOT. Those are both state roads. We cannot implement a four-way stop at that intersection. It must be implemented by the.
They said we could not, or they thinking on it?
No, no, no. I'm saying the city cannot.
Yeah, the city, right, okay. Well, who would I get in touch with?
We submitted that request to the DOT for them to do their normal traffic study to evaluate.
Oh, good gracious.
If a four-way stop is warranted. I have not heard, seen.
Well, I mean, is anyone I can contact?
That's why that gentleman came to the public power hour. They did the same thing in DOTs, there's not enough traffic, and they come to us and we pass it on.
Well, I don't know where DOT is because I live one block. It's traffic. It's traffic all the time.
The state will not implement a four-way stop solely for the purpose of reducing speed limit.
Well, speeding, but it is a lot of traffic. I mean, it is. But is there anyone I could contact with the DOT?
You gotta reach out Bill.
I can send you.
Bill Hickson, all right. So, Kelly Mobley and Bill Hickson, here I come.
Go get them, girl.
Why didn't you say good luck?
I said, go get them.
Next up, we've got Kayla Ferguson with HR.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Of course, open enrollments during October, the whole month, so if y'all have any changes or anything, but you know, dealing with employees with that. And then, we will be participating with Public Safety at the job fair at Aiken Tech. And then, hopefully, we will fill some of these jobs that are on the other side during that time.
Thanks, Kayla. With your permission, I'd like to move next to the focus items, and the first thing we have up is Tommy Paradise has got an item here under development impact fees. So, if we get those slides up, and Tommy, I'll turn it over to you.
First thing I'll say is that we have taught, the slides you're going to see, you've seen before. They are just kind of refreshing. But the other thing is, is when I was putting this together, I noticed that the first time I talked to y'all was October the 11th of last year. So, it is right at a year this has been in the ponder pile. Development impact fee is, impact fee means a payment of money imposed as a condition of development approval to pay a proportionate share of the cost of system improvements needed to serve the people utilizing improvements. So, you know, on your agenda, you have a resolution to tell the Planning Commission to get started on that. Go ahead to the next one. Just wanted to, the Planning Commission, though, in that resolution as it sits right now, it just says impact fee. So, the Planning Commission really needs some direction on what type of impact fee you want, and I'll get to those in just a minute. And the Planning Commission will need to do, hire a consultant that does that. Right now, I talked to Dr. Crawford this morning, and we've got an RFP on the agenda for next week for the Planning Commission, on the assumption that y'all pass it. And if not, we'll remove it from the agenda. And then, I don't know if Kelly's done impact fees or not, but I think about this, it might be like a bond attorney, might be some specialized legal stuff there. So, anyway, we got water and sewer, we got public safety, parks and recreation, and transportation. Those are basically the four types of impact fees that you normally see. Now, council can, and this is an estimate of what each impact fee would cost to do the development of it. We've also, in addition to do, of that, have to do a capital improvement plan. So, the question that I've got for Planning Commission is which one or couple or all do you want them to do going forward as they develop an impact fee for you? That is an estimate there of the cost, and, you know, that's a council policy thing, and we just need some guidance on that.
It's transportation, that's roads only, that's just roads, right? What is that?
Roads.
Okay.
That's what I, transportation, roads, bridges. I would put Greenway and Parks and Recreation.
Well, I mean, we look, I mean, look at Tom Caesar, the issues we're having, just, I mean, looking at future roads that we already have. So, I mean, for me, roads is, I mean, I'm just throwing that as a big one. I mean, you think about if we weren't fortunate enough, seeing James and Rachel, you know, those grants we got with the water and sewer, that infrastructure, I mean, it's not, it's going to be just as big in 10 years as it is what we just finished. So, for me personally, those are the two that stands out. I mean, I just see, infrastructure is where I'm seeing other communities, I mean, taking advantage of.
That's kind of what I was thinking was, well, public safety and then also the water and sewer, because I'm assuming water and sewer includes more trash trucks for the, you know, the more neighborhoods, more people to run them. The transportation, kind of like, you know, Tom ran into, I mean, we have very little control over what happens. I mean, really, probably the biggest road that needs to be looked at is five knots, but the problem is, is it weaves in and out of the city. It's still a state road, you know. I would say public safety, water and sewer, top two, and then, you know, Parks and Rec. I know we've got a, we're still, got to study out on the, waiting on the Country Club property. I don't know if we necessarily need to focus on that right now.
But what else on the park and recreation would be covered under that?
Just like the Greenway and everything they're over now.
Building, remember, this is for capital improvements. So, it would be a capital improvement item.
Not FTEs or anything like that.
Right. No, it would be for replacement, it would be for new stuff.
Tommy, would stormwater fall under transportation, or is that something on its own?
It could, it could, or it could fall under water, sewer.
Okay.
Stormwater, however, we listed that.
Okay.
You certainly have stormwater coming off of roads, but not all stormwater comes off of.
That's why I was thinking that.
But whenever it's coming from the road, I would say that would be part of it.
Okay. Would signalization be included under transportation as well?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Tommy, are you saying, like, we would pick either all of them or pick one or?
Correct. I'm, you know, whenever the Planning Commission moves forward, and you say impact fee, well, you see what you got. Well, what do you mean specific? You know, the more specific we get, the better information we can give you. If you give us a shotgun approach, you're going to get the shotgun answer. So, that's just what we're trying to do, is narrow it down so we go where y'all want us to go, and don't go on a rabbit trail over here.
But these are the costs of the consultant.
One of the things, and Jim and Rachel would know this better than I do, but just thinking about it, is what are the type projects that may be funded through the capital project sales tax? And what are the type projects that are, people really wouldn't vote for? They don't, water and sewer, you don't see. Parks and Recreation, people see that, and they're more apt to vote for it if it's on the capital project sales tax. That's just an observation, and of course, y'all can disagree with me. I thought I'd throw it out there as thought.
I think the infrastructure piece, me, the water and sewer, and I think, I think roads have got to be a piece of that. I just.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor. I think transportation and water and sewer, if I had to rank them, would be, I don't, I don't know which one I'd put one and two there, but those would be my top two with public safety probably third and Parks and Rec. I mean, they're all important. You know, it'd be nice to have them all, but I agree with the mayor. I think transportation and water and sewer would be the, the primary ones that I would, I would want to understand better as part of that process.
So, this is, think about, as growth comes, what, how are we going to be impacted? We're a younger community, and so, while we may have lots of families, will there be a lot of demand for more Parks and Recreation facilities? Or will there be far more because we are so widespread, so we may need another public safety headquarters, or pardon me, not headquarters, oh goodness, station? But to Tommy's point, the things that we would normally pay through CPST, if we could collect some of those fees upfront and plan for the future, so that if we know that we're expanding farther out into, let's just say, the Highland Springs area, we know we might need a substation, maybe some sidewalks along the lines of the transportation, any signalization, that sort of thing. So, less about how we, what we think that we want to need in a vision plan, and more about as the people come, what will the demands be and what will we have to provide?
And who?
That's water, sewer, and transportation.
Yeah, and then, the stormwater's a big one. I had this conversation with Tommy. I mean, if you think of all the neighborhoods that are being built, all the commercial, that's a lot of pavement and concrete that's not getting soaked up by dirt. So, storm sewer, stormwater sewer, I think is going to be huge. You know, if all of Exit 5 gets built up, Highland Springs gets built up, you know, rushing waters, all of that, all that land in there, if that gets built up, that water's got to go somewhere when it rains. So, I think that might be potentially the biggest impact, and we saw what Tanya did with the thing the other day.
David, Pat, your thoughts?
Yeah, who, explain to me, who pays the impact fee? Let's say at Highland Springs, would the developer pay the impact fees and the cost is shifted to the homeowner? Who pays the impact fee?
It's actually the home builder.
Do I, I'm sorry?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. It is normally collected when the building permit is issued. So, it's actually not the developer, it's the builder. Whoever pulls that permit would pay the impact fee. And of course, that impact fee is passed along, you know, it's a pass-through cost. But that's, that's how it's normally collected.
Well, why wouldn't we do all four? I mean, because it looks like you're dealing with all different, why not do it for all four at one time? I mean, that way, you're covering the, I mean, though, it's not, I hate to say it's not coming out of the city property.
Well, everyone's paying for the consultant and all the work.
Oh, oh, for the consultant.
Attorney, the legal attorney, and all of that.
Oh, so that's the main thing, the consultant.
Yeah. We got to pay a lot of money in the front end.
Yeah.
And all we're doing, if I'm not mistaken, Tommy, this process is just to get us the data points and the information for us to make a decision. We're not saying, hey, we want impact fees today. We're just saying, we want to go down that road to finally get the information so we can make an educated decision.
So, we would pay, let's say we did water and sewer, we'd have to pay consultant 45,000.
Correct.
And now, where does this money come from?
That's a good one. I swear.
Okay, well, hey, I'll write it down.
I think they've got some ARPA money.
You want to talk about that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, ARPA, we have some money set aside.
But is this something also we could do this year, like transportation, or once you pick transportation, that's the rest of your life here? You can't go back.
Well, what you do is you have your capital improvement program, and you can start with a transportation impact fee. And then, if you wanted to add on top of that a water and sewer impact fee, you could do that the next year. And the next year, you could put on, and I'm just going down the list, public safety fee, so you're not locked into it. However, okay, just the reality of it. Y'all listened to the public comments from the home builders, and you heard them talk about the cost of a treat. So, you, I feel sure that you will hear from them again on this, and, you know, whatever that fee is, is getting passed along eventually to whoever's buying that home. So, that's just, I just say that kind of guardrails, because it's not free money. Okay, so, what I'm hearing is y'all want to do transportation and water, sewer, stormwater.
Well, I mean, I'm like Ms. Pat, I think we need it on all, but if I was to prioritize them, it would be water, sewer, and transportation, top two.
Okay.
But, you know, in the same note, I really think that we need to be able to look at the impact because we really got to be paying attention to the future. And I think we've been missing out because we haven't done impact fees up until now. So, I really think we can have, you know, we're playing catch-up. So, I really think we need to be able to do them all, but I know that we have the, have the money and everything, but we're playing catch-up on a lot of these things.
I'm just trying to get a consensus here.
I think the consensus is realistically water, sewer, and transportation.
I agree as well. I hadn't spoken yet on this, but I also think public safety is important too. I mean, if we're looking at the cost, I mean, we, I mean, what's another 15,000 for, I don't know, that's just kind of my two cents, I'm, public safety's important. I mean, they're all important.
Well, but remember, like Tommy said, I mean, like, public safety, you know, if we need that next headquarters, that's capital sales tax. I agree. People can say, hey, we need a new fire station out here. I think those things are easier to sell. Same thing with Parks and Rec.
I think, to me, public sa, I think that's a great point. Public safety and Parks and Rec are often amenities, but they're. Public safety and parks and rec are often amenities, but they're, they're things that I think are hard. Yes, you could say a public, a police station or a park, but I just, I think Rachel's point, we have mechanisms available that, for that, but when you talk about really what we're talking about, guys, you just gotta look at the numbers than we did. And it was a year ago, we did our joint planning commission city council meeting.
That was it.
So we started this a year ago. And from that meeting, we had a retreat, we're talking, we didn't know more. But at the growth potential over the next 10 years, I mean, the water sewer and transportation just, I think those, those are the hard numbers. And I think public safety and parks and rec sound great, I just think there's other mechanisms out there that are better feel-good for citizens, which, you know, are better for council.
Okay.
So consensus of water sewer, transportation? All right, let's go down that route.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. And the next.
And Tommy, just also, what we're talking about is this process, if, if we should be able to get this back to us to really have discussion prior to maybe a 2025 budget.
Oh, yes, sir.
Would be the goal.
That would be my point.
If we go that way, yeah.
And, and that's what I was, how do we go from here? What's the path forward? And if next Monday night, y'all adopt that resolution, then that directs the planning commission, then Wednesday night, they would pass a, um, a motion, tell them to do an RFP. And then they go, we go forward to developing a capital improvement plan, because you have to have a capital improvement plan before you can do the impact fees. And to do that, we need to get a qualified person to assist us, a consultant. So that's the RFP. And so then we bring the CIP back for y'all's approval, and you adopt the council improvement plan, and we then would bring the ordinance back to you for the impact fees, and that would have to be passed by a positive majority. And I'm not saying that we might not bring both of them back at the same time. See how that plays out. Is that my last one? So any further questions for me?
Thanks for your efforts, Tommy. We'll put you to work. Go forward now.
Thank y'all.
Can we pull up the property discussion slides? So before I move into this slide, I'd like to just kind of preface this with, I know the council's had a number of citizens approach lately, either through power hour or other means, requesting city property that abuts their property, uh, that normally has to do with road easements or stormwater standoff. Uh, and our policy, or our position, if you will, as a staff, is typically to advise you as a council not to sell those parcels. Uh, sometimes those are based in statute, uh, where you were not allowed to sell those properties because of, uh, laws involving, you know, waterways, uh, and roadways, and also because the city owns a lot of property in the, in the city. And ultimately, anybody that abuts a city property, where we're using that as a buffer for something like the greenway or, or other means, um, would open up a lot of other requests. So all that having been said, uh, what I have for you today to consider is the sale of a residential parcel of property, uh, that was deeded to the city by the county through the forfeited land commission. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So you can see the parcels highlighted in red, uh, and you can also see that this is on the backside of Georgia Avenue, uh, and if I could orient you to the slide, um, your circled area there is, uh, behind Georgia Avenue. And if you're heading up north to Georgia Avenue, eventually it hit five-notch. Uh, and you can also see the North Augusta Gardens, uh, on the north side of, uh, the blue circle. But the property in question is at the corner, and it's a red highlighted property, just so you can see where that, where we're talking about. The next slide, please. And so as a more of a close-up, uh, that's an older picture. This is actually off the Aiken County GIS website. Uh, the city crews have since remediated that property. The, the, the house was, uh, kind of falling in on itself, so the city, through a previous council resolution in action, uh, remediated that property and took that down to degrade. Uh, and so now the intention is to request for you to move forward with the sale of the property, to recoup the money that the city has put into that property to, uh, take care of the old structure, uh, and then to get it off our tax rolls. We've done a, a brief analysis, there is no city requirement on that parcel, so there's no utility requirement, and we don't have to put a lift station there, there's no public safety requirement to put anything there. Uh, so ultimately, as we looked at that parcel, which is approximately .2 acres, when you look at the Aiken County JS and the tax information, uh, the overall property was valued at twenty-three thousand, I believe, but that included the property and then the structure itself. And obviously, the structure has been removed. Next slide, please. So based on that, if you look at just the property value, uh, the property is valued at seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, and so what I'd like to request from the council's guidance, uh, and that's part of what you have in here as far as the ordinance, to be able to advertise this through the city website, much like we did the properties off of Vista, Pointa Vista, uh, and that we set that for a minimum bid of seventeen thousand dollars for a period of 30 days. There is some local infill development happening in that area. There is a private builder that has a number of lots, and also the, I believe the next-door neighbor also had expressed an interest in this parcel as well. So we know there's some local interest, uh, in this particular parcel, and so that's why we have it up here for your consideration today.
This is the piece by the gardens that we did that several months ago, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we talked about it all, yeah, okay. We're finally at a point where we're ready to do it.
But now, was it the lady that, you know, come to council with the trash being thrown from North Augusta Gardens over? But I did go by that.
She's farther back.
Huh?
I mean, she's closer to the garden.
Well, she's closer, but, but is that property next door to her house?
I don't believe so, Councilwoman.
You don't think so, because?
It's, it's phys, it's several lots away from the North Augusta Gardens.
Um, yeah, but do we think, like, just a person wanting to buy to build a house there? Is that, so how do we, just like the gentleman who'd come here last week about the pool, you know, wanted to buy?
Well, first.
How do, how do you say yes to this and no to that? Huh? It's what?
Councilwoman, what I would say is, these are.
It's different.
These are different use cases. And the reason I say that is because the parcel that the gentleman that wanted the pool, uh, to participate in also has to do with easements for the road. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why we didn't want to move forward on that, uh, request. In addition to that, he also had problems with the fact that his pool line was above the front of his house. So he had, he had a multitude of problems. And even if he had, uh, successfully petitioned the council to consider selling that property from a zoning perspective, or from a building permits perspective, he wasn't even in the right then anyway. Uh, and for this particular parcel, this actually came to us through the forfeited land commission from the county, um, to dispose of the property, so to speak.
So we just really, I mean, what like we?
Yeah, this property, this property was acquired from the county solely for the purpose of recouping money we were going to spend on the property. And the county agreed to just go ahead and convey the property, property to us. The intent throughout from acquiring the property was to get it, clear it, and then sell. Never any intent to be used by the city.
Yeah, I, I think the difference is, everything up to this point has come to us when it's been a citizen who wants to buy city property to help themselves. This is property that there's no benefit from the city's perspective, and if we can pay, get our costs back for what we put into it, then someone can do something with it. So that's the difference.
But now, why didn't the county just keep it?
Well, the county, the county would it, but the county was not going to clear it. We contacted them because we knew that because of the problems on the property, we were going to have to spend money to clean it up.
Okay, so they're just paying it, I mean.
And, and before we spent that kind of money, because what you, what you normally do, you spend that money, you put it on the property as a tax. Well, that doesn't do us any good when the Aiken County Forfeited Land Commission owns it. And so we asked them, since we're going to do that, would you agree to convey it to us? And they agreed to do that.
I mean, if we didn't do it, it's just going to stay as a rundown piece of property, which is going to cause more trouble and crime and.
Well, did chief leave over there?
He had to go handle an issue with Councilwoman.
Well, no, I was, I was suggesting, when we talked about this before, it may possibly put a, uh, police substation there, because you know the crime and all that at North Augusta Gardens, sometimes having a little substation there might help, but, but I know that's, yeah, 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 yeah. But I, but I just don't want us to open a can of worms that.
Councilwoman, I don't believe we're doing that.
The, the city did it, but you're not letting me as a citizen do it.
Yeah, I think we would have be opening a can of worms if we had done the two that came to us in advance, but the difference is, we own the property. Versus somebody wanting to buy the property.
So from a fiscal perspective, just for the council to understand, what we would use the seventeen thousand dollars for, or whatever we receive as a successful bid, is to pay ourselves back for the cost to remediate the property, which is about two thousand dollars. And any residual money that we have would go into the capital projects fund for other priorities set by the council.
So, uh, any taxes owed, or anything like that? I mean, are we responsible for that at all?
The question, uh, Councilor, was whether there would still be taxes owed.
No, I mean, because basically the taxes were cleared, and, and, yeah, yeah. And I, and I will tell you, it's been sitting that way since 2014, because that's when, uh, it was sold at a tax sale, nobody bid on it, and the Aiken County Forfeited Land Commission took it.
Since we have our own forfeited land commission here in North Augusta, if it goes to Aiken County, they don't automatically convey it to us if it's in the city limits. We have to go after it and ask them.
Yeah, because, see, they, they sell it, it, it's sold for Aiken County taxes.
Right.
And nobody bids on it, so they don't get their money, so it goes to the Aiken County, uh, Forfeited Lands, Land Commission, so.
Okay.
So essentially, what you have is an ordinance as part of the pack and for the agenda that you, you have to vote on, uh, whether positively or negatively to, to move forward on this action. And so I will not list this property for sale unless we have two successive council votes, uh, from an ordinance, and then if it, if the council votes that way, then that, after the second reading, we would immediately post it on the city website for 30 days. But again, you still have the ability to, you know, pass that or not pass that, and you're going to do it twice. Next slide. So that was, that was the end of that slide deck. There you go. Uh, and that is all the items that I have to cover this evening. And Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you, focus items.
Really, uh, only thing I want to mention is, we will have our, it's, it's next Monday at 5:30, right, Jamie? The public hearing? The public hearing will be at 5:30 next Monday, uh, which is October the 16th. So, um, if anything else good for the order, I'm going to jump to item four on the back, Legal Executive Session Request, the city administrator in compliance with 30-4-70A2. The city administrator requests an executive session for the purpose of discussion negotiations, incident to propose contractual arrangements, proposed sale or purchase of property, the received legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending threat or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of a public agency, and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim, discussion specifically related to a legal briefing concerning update on potential litigation matter. Uh, so do have a motion to go into executive session. Ms. Carpenter, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Buck. Okay, uh, ask for a vote, all in favor? That is unanimous, and we stand adjourned. Y'all have a great evening. Thanks for being here.